Okay.
All the order. Um, we need to elect a vice chair. There you go, Chuck.
You're the only one left because I'm busy.
I nominate second.
Well, second.
Oh, thank you. That's a roll call, right?
No, it's not. You can go. I don't believe so. Just one second. Nope, you're all set. Nope.
The next.
Can we vote?
Do you want to vote? All in favor of Chuckie being vice chair?
I first vote.
Yeah.
I didn't do that because I wanted really, but just move along.
Um, next order of business is the discussion action on subdivision application for Red Barn Road subdivisions. The one submitted by Jeremy M. Turner. Public hearing and review of that.
When you better open the public hearing.
Um, I open the public hearing. Anybody have questions, comments? The roll call's a one.
Yes. How are we doing, Alan? Back in July of 2021, we began this subdivision application process. All the landowners, abutters, residents were all invited. Anybody that was concerned showed up. We've been through all this. We came from an agreement with the covenants applied. Brian is gone and we're stuck with it. So what do we do? The first house that's being built is in violation of two of the covenants already and maybe more. You all signed it. Except for John. Where do we go from here?
Well, that's what we're going to find out tonight.
That's my concern.
They've submitted an application for amending it. And that's what we're going to discuss.
How many people bought the property up here?
It's all been bought.
Public hearing still.
It was all bought knowing about covenants and we didn't force them to buy it. They know what they're buying.
Were all the covenants stated in the deed?
I haven't seen a deed.
The deeds reference the subdivision on file to register.
Anybody else have comments?
We're looking to change this one law.
Well, according to Tim, one of them has already been changed.
If there's no further public comment at this time, we'll close the public hearing at six oh four and begin with the process of reviewing the application and then we can consider comment on that application at that point in time.
Will be public hearing.
If you could, please provide the board with an overview of your proposal.
Yep, the setback is seventy five feet. We want to move it to fifteen feet or more.
Being lot number?
Four. Changing anything else?
I think that flags lot number five.
That was the original plan. The numbers changed once it was approved by your board.
Okay. Uh, code officer, could you take us, please, through why we're here today?
Uh, the reason we're here today is obviously Mr. Turner here owns a lot. He had a question that he's looking to get their setback reduction on. Uh, he's installed a septic system. Shortly after he purchased the lot and since then, he's developed a land of where he wanted to locate the house. The house is in front of the septic system with the roadside and is just not seventy five feet between the septic system and the the road. Now, that's the reason he's asking for the the change of the setback on that particular lot. He did start to work on it. I talked to him. We've been aware of the issue. And he's been waiting to see if the board has any interest in changing this and he continued building this family house.
So it was only the septic system that within the that seventy five foot setback?
No.
The foundation as well?
The foundation has not been for you. The ground works on the underground plumbing is in. The stairwell needs to link it down and it just here stopped at that point when it was in the violation.
I tried to find minutes today to tell me. But when when we went to the attitude with this subdivision, was it the owner who asked us to make a seventy five foot setback? To say that please?
Not going to be out of school. It's a convert here. It was a voluntary covenant that the owner developer proposed and the original proposal was, I believe, right here. There shall be no clearing of woody vegetation within one hundred feet of the center line of Red Barn Road other than for the installation of a driveway, utility lines, or septic system. It was to remain naturally vegetated and to serve as a privacy buffer from the road. So that was from the original plan. That was a voluntary offering from Mr. Ray at the time. In the discussion in your meeting was about the potential for solar and if people wanted to clear out the front of their lot, that there shouldn't be a vegetative restriction, that it should be a building restriction. And so that was then pivoted from the vegetative buffer just to a construction buffer.
And the foundation is how far back from the center of Red Barn Road?
From the edge of the right away, it's probably nineteen twenty feet.
And that's what it's seventy foot right away there?
No, it's actually from the edge of the right away. So go up to the edge of the town's right away, sixty six feet, I believe, out there. So from the far, the north edge of there right away, he's within twenty feet of that edge.
The preliminary covenant was from the center line. The finalized covenant was from the edge of the right of way, which is very wide road on Red Barn Road. It's a four rod road, I think.
Right.
Great. Both three, yeah. So that pushes the setback substantial.
Well, this was the primary. I mean, they're requesting it just for one, but we do it for one, but all the million asked for it. But on the other hand, the gentleman has already started construction. And as Richard said, it was not something that the planning board demanded.
Uh, and the person that did the subdivision has long done yard.
I know. I guess those farmers. I don't know. Somebody talk to me.
Chuck, your great deal thought.
Well, I wasn't involved in anything, so I don't. Is there, is there, is the town legal if they let him have it? Is the town legally you know, mess?
Oh, we did, yeah. I don't think so because I looked at the subdivision and there isn't a setback in the road on, in the subdivision order.
No, but they're correct. There's not one in the ordinance. It's now a matter of deviating from the original plan.
Yeah.
Which was a covenant. And in order to modify covenant according to the ordinance, it required him to come and refile the full application, not just to request for variance.
Yeah.
I don't want to interfere, but uh,
Please.
I'll watch my step carefully because I'm not a member of the board. Bear with me. And all comments get directed to the board, not to each other. It's been alleged that there's already a violation on the first lot. You're the owner of the first lot of the subdivision. Would you care to speak to that?
Yeah, so the violation is setback. I cut four trees that were in front of the house. I replace those four trees when I'm done with landscaping. So they were all leading towards the road. I cut them out. I'm going to replace them. I've already had that conversation. And I own two of the other lots and I'm not looking for change on those. I know your concern was everybody else is going to come to the town and want it. I own two other lots. I have no interest. So and my son owns one.
Is that the only known violation?
Those two, yeah.
The trees?
Yeah.
Okay. All comments directed to the board?
Yeah. I take that back.
Okay.
We're living in a camper out there.
Okay. And is that in violation of your covenants?
Violation, but I would already have my house weathered tight. I build these homes in six weeks. I would already be weathered tight, so it was a short term thing. I haven't tried to hide anything from anybody. I haven't lied to anybody. This was I stopped as soon as I was asked to stop. All other landlords in the subdivision I've had signed in order to ask them to all give me this.
Are these trees in the, in the road right away or is it back there?
It's not. They were in the road right away.
Are they kind of all maple trees?
Yeah, some of them were because the power line needed to go to my power. There was already a driveway open there. Sorry, we got four.
Cutting trees within that right of way isn't a violation of the covenant.
That, no, no, the only person I could follow on.
So is there another violation alleged in the covenants? Just so we can get this all out on the table.
I have no problem. I have no problem with the trees. I didn't say anything about any trees.
You said there were two violations.
Two violations of the camper and the setback.
Okay, okay.
I personally, although I know what the ordinance says, but it does say that a camper can be on the lot if it's there just like stored there and there's a house. I mean, if I had a camper and I was going to put it beside my house until summer.
Tarbell Hill Road, you got the same thing going on.
I, I have a fourteen by forty camp there as well. I needed something for the bathroom. I bought a new camper.
People living in Tarbell Hill Road while they're building their house.
But we can't get off into the weeds. Got to stay on this.
Yeah.
The, the current Red Barn Road subdivision is, would mention camper trailers and RVs shall only be permitted on the premise May first through November thirtieth each year. The covenant shall not apply to camper trailers and RVs when stored on the premise in conjunction with a single family residence. So it's not stored. He's living in it, self declared. So no need to varnish that. It's a fact. It needs to be on the table for you folks. Full transparency here. Uh, Mr. Chair, are you willing to take comment from the public?
Yes. I have a question. What, what evolved to make that become seventy five foot? What was the reason?
The, the one that's in the covenants now?
Yeah.
It was proposed as a hundred foot vegetative buffer. The board, the planning board that was seated at the time questioned it. It was reduced to seventy five. And then there was discussion about the potential for solar and, and whatnot on these lots. And so that's when the vegetative restriction was removed and it allowed for just the building setback.
And that includes the removal of those made in terms of?
No, there's, that's not a violation. And if it was to provide utilities with that previous covenant, it still would have been exempted if it was for the purpose of utility installation.
It's only through utilities to get in there is losing for that seventy five. You might understand.
The seventy five foot build setback right now is intended to preserve the rural nature of the area. The overdevelopment, the buildup on the roadside.
Utility thing, oh, sorry, so thank you. For the owner puts back vegetation in place in what is then a move, then it's still maintaining that water and growth, right?
Correct, ar- arguably. One might see it that way.
Right, do you have a moment?
Was there a building permit?
Yeah, but it's been submitted and it hasn't been actually issued yet because of this.
So the work was started without a permit. Uh, he was on COVID. He was out with COVID. I had it filled out and dropped off here before he started working and had conversation. So the, the only reason to get deleted is because he was on COVID. I have a septic design, septic permit. That's all been done. Permit was done. Wasn't the setback in the permit? I just, I just said this, the permit was not done. Okay, there was no permit. Well, we would have known about the setback.
It wasn't an application, but thanks to COVID. Wow.
So the reason the setback is there, just so we're all aware. Brian Ray, the gentleman that put this through subdivision found a historical foundation on lot two. So he put the setback there so nobody would disturb that foundation. That's the only reason it's there. That's out of his mind.
Who, lot two?
Is that the one you're building on?
Yeah, no. Is there a setback anywhere in North Lot?
Not in standard code. Integrated in other subdivisions, yes.
And what's the setback?
It depends on the subdivision.
Typically fifteen feet.
It, it varies from subdivision to subdivision and we don't see too many subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm um, on the application, uh, even though it was under COVID, kind of tired here in COVID excuses and stuff, but was there because of that process being done and nobody could act on that application? Is there, um, whether I'm not approved or did it have to wait? Was there a waiting timeline or um, what created it not to be approved or at least viewed as this government?
So.
That, that's not nobody but me. That's not Dave's fault. I, I dropped the application off. He was ill. But I received it just. You know? That's all it was. It wasn't like I didn't have an application filled out, dropped off at the town. I had just built a house down the road and I called all partners and that, correct? So.
I just know we're clear, Kevin. It, it's not about whether the application was dropped off. It was the action that was or was not taken under an application question.
I'll, I'll pay a fee for not having an application. Take a penalty for it. Was there a sketch on the application?
There was.
With the exact?
On, on candidly, that's what red flagged it. That's what turned into a notice of violation in the stop work order.
That's when it should have stopped. When it did so.
Yeah. So this board does not have the ability to leverage, uh, to levy a penalty. Uh, if a permit is issued, work is already commenced. It will be an after the fact permit, which is strictly a double fee. So it's fifty dollars.
Did you issue the permit eventually?
No. Because of the setback issue.
I saw work immediately when you put it.
If the board doesn't change this to a different setback, it's like the issue of property because the restrictions says it can be built there. That's why Mr. Turner's here to see if you guys would entertain considering changing this.
Once more.
Michelle, you've been with us years and years and years.
I've never done one of these. People just usually do what they want to do and don't even.
That's why we're in this mess. Not happy.
Ob- obviously, I'm, I'm probably going to overstep, but if the board has no objection.
No.
Several violations doesn't necessarily scream, come and help me real quick. Uh, about our objections were not unreasonable. So really, I think it's is there room for negotiation for something that might be of?
How many other objections were there?
Once, well, right now, one.
One.
We haven't worked our way through this. Uh, but bear with me. It's still, we can't discount one.
I'm just curious.
One or a thousand carries the same weight. Uh, is there something that could be negotiated to something that, you know, maybe not everybody's perfectly happy, but everybody's pleased to walk away? In, in other words, and I'm going to play this one out loud. A vegetative buffer on that lot? You offering up in a sub, in the subdivision plan, no future alterations to the subdivision for any properties that you own now? That's something you can put into a future deed? And is there any other concession that you think could reasonably be put?
I'll, I'll, I won't do construction on one of the lots. Can you go up there?
Um, have you spoke to the contractor of what we talked to actually move it to it in, in twenty five thousand?
Yeah.
That's if I can make it fit with the separate.
There's quite a difference between fifteen feet and seventy five feet. So you have stuff already in up to that fifteen foot? Wow.
But that's the septic tank that's up to that fifteen foot?
No, it's, it's the foundation perhaps. Everything's in it, but the concrete, it's really the concrete.
Well.
We bought a champion, yeah.
We're not here to make life difficult for anybody. That's not what we're doing. Um, and the thing that still stands out to me was that this was not a requirement. It was not required by the ordinance. It was only because the subdivision applicant said he wanted it.
Who was the original, man, I asked, who's the original applicant to the subdivision?
Maine Woods and Waters LLC, Brian Ray from Freebro.
So it's not the owner of this lot?
No, he sold off of the lot.
So those those stipulations within have, were done with the original subdivision owner in that application, right?
Yeah.
But those stay in perpetuity?
I understand, yeah. And that's why I'm trying to get a better understanding of that, um, then the board would have to amend if I'm correct, they would have to amend that. And then if we amended it in this one, then it shall, it's the board would have to, you can bet, putting each other in a C one of. And I don't know the complainer. I don't know the, you know, the second view. I, I, I all know not making it simple, but you know, it's not really difficult. You know, using experience, if, for example, you got steam and had a bug. You know, I don't mean to make your life difficult, but if there are rules, there are regulations and if it's in black and white, that's what I do more use than ever. They might, I think. I'll shut up.
What I don't understand is why the covenants weren't put in the deed. They normally are, I've seen.
A lot of times they are. But a lot of times it to save two or three dollars at filing, they just say they reference the subdivision and that's what this deed does. This deed references the subdivision plan on file. Let's gain some perspective. Is there anything that would mitigate circumstances enough that you would be fine with this moving forward in a way or another?
No.
Okay.
We were other people who purchased property. We use them when we live our lives. In the area. You see him act a little bit better?
Think on the far corner.
Which corner?
Down on the right, way down on the right. It catches the corner. Because you go from the outsides of the subdivision and the five hundred foot cast.
That had to be true. I can't really see that would devalue me with fuck you, but that's my opinion.
No, no.
Why?
I agree.
It's a, it's a new home I'm building while it's not not within the trailer.
Well, actually, that's a covenant.
Right, no, I understand. I'm just saying, you talked about devaluing property.
Yeah, I know.
That's all.
Oh, Lord. So, um, you've already corrected the building permit thing. With the?
No, he can't. The building permit is on file. But I'm sorry, the building application is on file. A permit cannot be issued because we can't issue a permit that's in violation of the subdivision.
No matter which approach you make, you're gonna.
What's that somebody?
Yeah. My question would you? Is there anything that could be done? Could be done to make you agreeable to collect the seventy-five feet?
Less than seventy-five, fifteen is a little ridiculous. We went through all this during the application phase of the subdivision. We discussed it all. We discussed the setbacks. It was all agreed to by everyone that was here. Signed, sealed, delivered. Done. Fifteen feet's a little ridiculous.
How far is your house off the right way?
Less than that?
Yeah.
Not fifteen, but so.
Yes, I'm not, this house is okay, but mine's ridiculous. I just, I, I understand you're in a lot of subdivision, but.
Piece of property was bought knowing covenants on it. We didn't force you to buy it. We're gonna live up to the covenants.
I am going to say. Just a statement of that. We have allowed amendment to subdivisions before. And I feel like this one. As I said, because it was the owner's voluntary thing to do the seventy-five foot set back.
Nothing, um, ordinance that required it.
No, I looked at that ordinance pretty good.
He wanted to keep the neighbors happy, so we told us what we wanted to hear, and now he's gone.
Of all those pieces of property that's old. It's very hard to be applying on any of the others.
Okay, I'm aware of that.
I own two of the other lots, and my son owns the other lots. Eventually, he's gonna.
You have a suggestion, Mike?
Yeah, um, I think somebody should put a motion on the table to approve. The subdivision with a setback, and you need to vote on it, up or down.
Okay.
We could be here all night.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna do it, are you gonna do it straight out? Or, or are you gonna put additional restrictions on it, or what? But you gotta get something out on the table that you can concretely vote on.
All right, I will make a motion. That we amend.
It's gonna be approving the subdivision. Not amending the subdivision.
On all the lots?
This is a whole new subdivision application.
I thought we were only doing this step back.
That's the, the only difference he's looking for. Is the same subdivision with just that adjustment. It's not an amendment, it's a whole new subdivision.
Okay.
So it's gonna, it would be a motion to approve the Red Barn Road subdivision. And then list the modification if that's your.
Oh, I see. Okay, so.
Before you make the motion, Kelly. I have a question. In that basic fifteen foot, could you? Put a line of vegetation where your house could not be used in the road?
Probably not, not vegetation, but I don't.
It's a really good.
Yeah, I don't think there's problems seeing my house, I think it's just that. Made a mistake.
Yeah, it's not she, and it's the closeness, proximity to the road, right?
He wants his house that close to my.
And you go right here.
Right.
Yeah, I was just. Here's, I mean, I don't know with the original, right, but then the setback issue. But is it because? Is it actually because the, um, setback became in violation? Or is it because what everybody had originally agreed to? Um, in the subdivision. Ordinance in itself, or for that subdivision? So I guess that's what is sitting here, I'm wondering, you know, I, I mean. Somebody voted on. Clarifying and approving or going along with that subdivision. Yeah, with all that information already in there, with the seventy-five foot. How did they come to agreement on that seventy-five foot? Maybe, maybe the owner said, okay, we'll agree to it, but was there the butters that came in and said, hey, look, you know?
Tim was there.
That's what happened to Paul. That's what we wanted. We wanted a hundred feet, but then we decided the trees weren't that important. I, I spoke to the gentleman that did the subdivision, and the reason he did it was because on lot two at the top of the hill in the field. Was a historical foundation, that was.
That's the way you're building your house?
No, it is not.
All right, let's get things moving. So I will make the motion. That we approve the Red Barn Road subdivision. With. The amendment. That on. Lot two, four, lot four. We will amend the setback from seventy-five feet to fifteen feet.
No further restrictions, nothing else, just a strict amendment of the setback.
Yeah, things for anything?
To your pleasure, to your motion.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion to reduce the set, to approve the subdivision, accepting the amendment to the original for lot four, the setback reduced to fifteen feet? That's going once. Going twice.
We gotta get something on, we can vote it up or we can vote it down. But you gotta get, I mean, it's like Richard said, we could sit here for the mid.
Ready to go ahead.
Are you seconding her motion?
Yeah.
All right. They moved in second to approve the Red Barn Road subdivision, which was previously approved. With the amendment for lot four, reducing the setback on that lot only from seventy-five feet to fifteen feet. Sorry, this is a more discussion at this point in time. Does the board have any more discussion?
I think I've said every day, I mean, I. I know what he did with not. But I can understand it in a way because it's not in. It would have been so much better. Um, because I wouldn't know. To go to the registry of deeds and check it out to see what I was allowed to do on my lot. I wouldn't have it until I started working here.
All the property has been sold?
Yeah.
So it's not. Where you could just go in and, and change any of the, the deeds for the remaining. Rest of them. And there's no, there is no happy medium between the two. It's either you're gonna go one way or the other. Um, well, somebody's gonna.
The applicant has already offered up through the course of discussion, a vegetative buffer. And no development on another lot. So if you're looking for concession, that might be where you're looking. But maybe not, that's not what the motion was, and that was already on the table before the motion. So if you're looking for concessions, you might find it in that area, and you would amend your motion that's on the table. If you're not. The pleasure of the board.
But we need to take a vote on. What Charlotte offered, and that was to accept. That changed the.
You don't have to, i- if you want to, you can, but you can also amend that motion for concession consideration if you'd like. Other than that, you can approve this if you'd like as well.
I make a motion that.
You can make another motion.
You would move to amend.
I, I moved to amend. That motion. With the concessions that. Were there?
The applicant offered, which include no construction on lot number. Two, one, subdivision lot number one. And a vegetative buffer.
Yes. Best you could do for a vet, for, really, I know this won't be in my, but I know that there's vegetation out there.
What, what's the distance off the edge of the traveled way? That's different than the right of way.
Yeah, that's probably thirty-five.
Okay, so there should be plenty of room to maintain some vegetative buffer.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably fifty.
And maintain it. The duty of this applicant, the property owner, to maintain that vegetative buffer. Uh, we're not talking long, we're talking.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying, it's all.
All right, so John, you amended?
Yes.
What?
Do a vegetated buffer.
With maintenance.
With maintenance.
And no construction on subdivision lot one. And the record should reflect that the applicant owns subdivision lot one. And has the legal authority to offer that.
Second that.
Who said we can never sell it?
He could sell it, but it's always gonna be no construction.
Underdeveloped.
And that would be put in the, the deed for that property.
It's gonna be put into the subdivision plan.
Okay.
Well, I mean, whether or not they choose to put it into the. Deed. I mean, you could require that, but.
You know, that way it would never come up again that it wasn't in the deed and I didn't know about it. If, if we stipulate that it will be put into the deed for that piece of property.
Lot number one?
Yes.
Okay.
That's unfair.
Charlotte does, putting that no build restriction to lot number one into, putting it into a deed. Is that fine with you? The applicant would file, refile corrective deed to state that lot one of the subdivision was not buildable.
That way it would never be. I, it's not in the deed. Okay?
So I include that in the motion.
Yes, you were the second, that's why I'm asking if you're okay with it. Is that the end of your amended motion?
I, yes.
Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment. And the amendment is to require a deed restriction included in the subdivision, that lot one be non-buildable. And a vegetative buffer be installed and maintained on lot number four of the subdivision.
And that's the amended motion.
That's the amendment, that's the amendment. Just the amendment alone. They'll vote on that. The no bill and the vegetative buffer. And he's voting to amend it.
Voting to amend.
So you need to vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
In favor of a deed restriction for no construction and a vegetative buffer, all those in favor? Okay. None opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, so now the motion on the table is to approve the subdivision with an amendment to lot number four, reducing the setback to fifteen feet. Requiring on the same lot, a vegetative buffer to be maintained. And lot number one to be deeded and included in the subdivision as non-buildable.
Yes.
That's the motion on the table right now. Does the board have any other discussion about that? Does the applicant have any other comment? This might be a big mistake, but does the public have any other comment?
No.
Seeing none, Mr. Chair, I think you're ready to call on a vote to approve the subdivision with amendment to lot number four, reducing the setback from seventy-five feet to fifteen feet. Requiring a vegetative buffer and maintenance ongoing on that lot. And number one to be deeded and included in the subdivision as non-buildable.
All in favor? Charlotte?
That was his.
That's.
Yes, John, yes.
Okay. That pretty much concludes the discussion about this subdivision. The. Will issue written findings that will be directly related to the previous application and will modify this here today. You will be subject to a thirty-day appeal period. Understand, if you choose to proceed, you're legally entitled to proceed, but if an appeal is heard, you could be subject to moving that. Uh, you will also need to provide us with the requirements, uh, for those plans, uh, in the appropriate number of copies so that this board can sign off on them. And then you'll be responsible for filing them at the registry of deeds. Uh, and those, then a copy will be returned to us. You will not be able to get a permit until that is done. The subdivision. Pardon?
When do I get you this?
As soon as you can, because the appeal period won't start until we have that, and it's filed at the registry of deeds. And that has to be filed at the registry of deeds before the code officer can issue a permit, because that's what legally validates that, so, uh. You'll want to get us, it'll need to include the language that was just approved in the motion. We can get that to you, um, in writing tomorrow, if you'd like. Do you have any other questions? Are there any other questions from the board or the public about what we've just gone through?
This is. Yeah, I have one. All right, who's, who's gonna appeal?
Uh, if you have an interest in.
Okay, I, no. I don't know about anybody else, but I can speak to myself and.
Yeah, so the, the process is you have to, you have to be able to demonstrate standing and then file an appeals, and then that goes to the appeals board, and it will be heard either de novo. It usually isn't heard de novo, it'll be heard based upon the modifications to the restrictions tonight, but.
Exactly, and the whole way, my thirty days.
He's entitled to proceed. But if he proceeds and appeals filed and it's overturned, then it's applicant's loss.
Can't beat anybody else.
Curry appreciates that you just put that on the recorded record.
I, I got one other. Thing, will there be penalties for? Going through without having permit in the.
Yes, there will be an after-the-fact permit, which is a double, and a permit for building a house is twenty-five dollars, so in order for him to get that permit, it will be fifty dollars. There's nothing else. If he had violated the stop-work order, uh, then it would have been probably far more substantial. Um, and, and probably included attorneys, but. Anyway. Uh, this is civil discourse, I appreciate it, it was not easy to get through, obviously, so thank you, everybody.
Speaking, yeah, like everybody, that.
Right.
Hopefully, we learned from it, we appreciate it.
Get your permits early, get your permits often. We recommend building permits and plumbing permits and plumbing permits and building permits, don't wait. Does the board have any other business tonight?
I. We don't have to discuss about the budget.
Uh, your budget's been passed already.
Oh, it has?
Yep.
Oh, I know what it was. I know what it was, it was the, uh, fees.
The fees will be on your next regular meeting, because this was a special meeting held.
Okay.
That'll be on your, uh, February meeting.
On the next meeting, we're also gonna be doing the. Amending new ordinance or something?
Uh, your next regular meeting will be discussing, uh, things that were at the last meeting, I'll, I'll pull the agenda together, there were three things I think that were on that. And then you'll have the decision to say, do you wanna postpone the meeting? If there's no other business, do you wanna meet just for that? Or do you want an application to meet with? The other thing is, is that we do have, um, vacancy on the planning board, and we are taking volunteer applications, I think I have five or six of them right now. And we don't believe, I don't believe that the board will appoint until after town meeting, I think it'll happen in the fifteenth of March, when the appointment will be made.
Are there really vacancies? On the board that are gonna be voted on at the election?
The current vacancy that's being sought for volunteer applications is the shoot vacancy.
Yeah.
And that doesn't have the nomination window, even around a shortened nomination process before town meeting, we just can't do it and get a ballot out in time. So the select board will have the ability to appoint that, and then.
Somebody gets written in?
No. No, because the, what the ballot will only have the offices for the ones that were vacant. And so I believe it's Chuck and you and Margaret who are running, and there's two running for one, two running for two seats and one running for another seat. And then the select board will make an appointment on the shoot vacancy, and they can determine whether or not they would like to fill that by election in June, November, or wait. And then the select board will make an appointment on the shoot vacancy, and they can determine whether or not they would like to fill that by election in June, November, or wait until March. It's just the timing of it. If it had been a month earlier, it would have gone to election.
Yeah.
Yeah. Saying no further business from the board?
No further business for the board, and I close the meeting at, um, six fifty.
Perfect, thank you.